Good morning, councilors. And for the record, Oliver, OJACO Community Planning Director. And with me this morning is Ms. Jenna K. And Jose Alvarez. Jenna will be giving the presentation, councilors. And this work session is informational in nature. This is a review of the CEPA process overview and scoping. And you will find the State Environmental Policy Act in RCWU 43.21C, and also in the Washington Advised Administrative Code 197-11. And in Clark County, you will find the CEPA process and all the rules, even though some of them were adopted by reference. But you will find that in Clark County Code Title 470, anything you would like to know about CEPA is in that Clark County Title 40 Code 470. Like I said, this is more of a process in CEPA when this responsible official determines that there is likely to be an adverse environmental impact on any action. That responsible official is, will make a determination whether an EIS will be done or not. Once that official makes that determination, the process begins. And we want to share that with you, and then answer questions that you may have. Jenna?
Can you hear me now? Yeah, okay. Good morning. As Oliver said, my name is Jenna K., and I work in his department in community planning. So for the presentation, we'll just do a quick reminder of where we are in the overall comp plan process. Then we'll give an overview of the CEPA process, and then look at the timeline for key steps in that process. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so this is our snapshot that gives a high-level overview of the whole comprehensive planning process. The checkmarks show items that have been completed to date. So your vote last week on the population allocations was the last decision for the project initiation phase. So we're now moving fully into the second phase, which is shaping the plan. And in this shape the plan phase, this is where the environmental impact statement process begins. So on this slide, we've circled key steps in the comp plan planning process that relates to the environmental impact statement, or EIS for short. And we'll be expanding on those pieces in this presentation. Let's go to the next slide. And then also, just as a reminder, as you all know, this slide is showing, you know, the countywide population and jobs projection decisions that you all have made. That is what we're planning for. So we are planning for a little over 190,000 more people, and a little over 88,000 more jobs. Next slide. Okay, so let's dive into talking about the State Environmental Policy Act, or CEPA process. So your meeting materials included Issue Paper 6, which provides a basic framework by which the county will launch its environmental impact review process under 43.21C RCW and WAC 197-11. So that's the State Environmental Policy Act and its rules. And so when we say CEPA, that's what we're talking about. And we're entering the CEPA process for the non-project action of reviewing and updating the county's comprehensive plan. So today, the county is advertising its intent to prepare an environmental impact statement assessing the potential impacts of the comp plan update. So we're issuing our determination today, and that also kicks off what's called CEPA scoping, which I'll talk more about in a moment. But overall, the EIS process is a tool for identifying and analyzing probable adverse environmental impacts, reasonable alternatives, and possible mitigation. And in scoping, the county is seeking public input and county council direction to define issues related to the comp plan update that will be addressed in the environmental impact statement. So one really key thing to note is that while the EIS process is closely integrated into the comprehensive plan process, the EIS itself is not a decision document. It is a supporting document. So the EIS presents options and analyzes effects of various alternatives. But it's a supporting document that you all are expected to consider, but it's not the thing that you're deciding on for this comp plan update. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Okay, so the CEPA process, it follows a series of prescriptive steps that are in the state statutes. And on this slide, we've got the key components listed here. The teal-colored rectangles are key pieces in the EIS process. And the orange rectangles on the screen are showing key decision points that you all will be making in the planning process. So you can see that they're kind of interrelated as we work through. So I'm going to talk through each of these steps in the process. Before I do that, I also just wanted to note that the county hired Seaboo Environmental. They are the technical firm who will be doing all of the actual writing of the EIS. So that contract you all approved back in November of last year. So they'll be doing those steps. Okay, so, if you can stay on the other one, thank you. Okay, so today, the county is issuing its environmental threshold determination. So this is the step where it's the formal decision as to whether the comprehensive plan is likely to cause a significant adverse environmental impact, and whether more intensive environmental analysis is required, such as writing an EIS. If the county determines that probable significant adverse impact is expected, we issue a determination of significance, which also serves as the scoping notice. And in that document, it describes the main elements of the proposed comprehensive plan update, and main areas that the lead agency has identified for discussion in the environmental impact statement document. Okay, so that is being, a determination of significance is being issued today, and it is launching our scoping process. So in scoping, this is where the county, we're seeking public input and county council direction to help define issues related to the comp plan update that need to be addressed in the environmental impact statement. So it helps us, the scoping process helps us narrow what to study in the environmental impact statement. So what significant adverse impacts, what reasonable alternatives, and what kinds of mitigation measures are going to be reviewed and analyzed in this document. Scoping also helps us rule out impacts that aren't significant. So we don't need to study everything in an EIS. We only need to study significant impacts. So this process helps us define what the environmental analysis will look like. During the scoping process, the county is going to host a few open houses. These are one way that the public can provide comment in the scoping period, but people can also submit in writing as well during the comment period. And the other important piece around scoping is that it's basically taking off the process to begin developing land use alternatives, or, you know, options for growth. So scoping will get some public comment, and then there'll be additional technical analysis, input from the cities. We'll talk to you all some more for council guidance. And that's all going to come into play into determining what alternatives should be considered, both for comprehensive planning, but also the alternatives that would be studied in the EIS. So once the alternatives are defined, the draft environmental impact statement is going to be written by our technical consultants. They're going to follow the requirements in the CEPA rules. And the draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS, it's supposed to be providing an impartial discussion of significant environmental impacts from the proposed comprehensive plan update. And it's supposed to be informative to you all as decision-makers, and also to the public, of reasonable alternatives, including mitigation measures that would avoid or minimize adverse impacts, or enhance environmental quality. A draft environmental impact statement has to consider multiple alternatives. So we are required to consider a no-action alternative, in which case no updates are made to the comprehensive plan. And then we must also consider additional alternatives as well. Once the draft EIS is written, it will be published, and there'll be a public comment period. And it's basically a way for members of the public, affected tribes, other agencies, to review it and provide comment based on what's in there. After that public comment period on the draft EIS, that's when the council will need to select a preferred alternative. And the preferred alternative is what will be studied in the final environmental impact statement. But it's also what the basis of the comp plan update, the proposed amendments of changing the comprehensive plan also need to be in alignment with that preferred alternative. So that's a key decision point for wrapping up the draft comprehensive plan amendments that will come for you for review and approval. So once the preferred alternative has been selected, the consultant teams will write the final environmental impact statement. And a final environmental impact statement, it revises the draft environmental impact statement as needed. And then also, there's a requirement to respond to all the comments that have been submitted as well. And so the consultants will follow the CEPA rules on how to do that. And that final environmental impact statement needs to be issued before the council votes on the update to the comprehensive plan. So that's a key sequencing piece that you need to, and is to be published. You need to consider it before you make a decision. So the whole CEPA review process and the comprehensive planning process both end when the council makes a decision regarding an update to the comprehensive plan. So in your decision-making, at the end of the process, you are expected to consider the environmental information in the EIS, along with other technical and economic information, whether or not you decide to approve the proposed updates to the comprehensive plan. Okay, so that was the whole process, very quickly. I'm going to now break, go into some of these in a little bit more detail. So let's go to the next slide. Okay, so an EIS document itself, you know, usually at least 100 pages or so. It's a pretty technical document. And it analyzes the various alternatives, and it looks at different elements of the environment. So it's analyzing those alternatives through an environmental lens. And it's going to look at various components. So it's going to look at earth, air, water, fish and wildlife habitat, energy and natural resources, land and shoreline use, transportation, public services and utilities, and performance with the Growth Management Act. And so for each of these elements, there'll be a variety of analyses sort of within those headings and those topics. So for instance, in the earth section, the consultants may look at impacts related to geology, soils, topography, erosion, things like that, things related to earth. You know, in the air section, that's where they'll be looking at impacts to air quality. That's also where impacts related to climate would show up. Other examples, like in the built environment side, for the land and shoreline uses, that's where they'll be analyzing the alternatives in relationship to existing land use plans and the estimated population that needs to be accommodated. That's where housing impacts get analyzed. And there's a whole lot of other things listed in that category, too, that could be looked at. So there's a lot of specifics within each of these categories that'll be analyzed comparatively between the alternatives in the EIS document. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, I also wanted to dive a little bit deeper into the alternatives, which end up integrated into this process. So as I mentioned, CEPA requires us to consider a no-action alternative. And so in this case, that would be not approving any updates and just not changing the current comprehensive plan, which is the 2016 comprehensive plan. But additional alternatives do need to also be developed and considered. And so the county and each of the cities need to compile sort of the types of actions they want to be considered, and folded into possible alternatives. Once those alternatives are defined, that's what will be used in the draft EIS. Those alternatives will be what's studied. And the preferred alternative, towards the end of the process, it can be one of the alternatives that's considered in the draft EIS. It could be a combination of those alternatives, or pull pieces from those alternatives. So the possible alternatives sort of frame the conversation. And then the preferred alternative, though, there's more time to discuss and consider things to figure out what that final preferred alternative will be. So we'll be working with you all on development of these alternatives over the summer. But just to give some more examples, we thought we'd look back at the last comprehensive plan update and what the alternatives were that were considered last time. So for the 2016 update, there were four land use alternatives that were considered, based on common growth forecasts, allocations, and assumptions. So alternative one was the required no-action alternative, which made no changes to any urban growth area boundaries, policies, or regulations that were in place at the time. The second alternative considered made no changes to existing urban growth area boundaries, but incorporated updates to policy direction, land use zoning, county council principles and values, and acknowledged some existing trends, and resolved some mapping inconsistencies. The third alternative incorporated some modest urban growth area boundary expansions. And then there was a fourth alternative, which included some rural and resource area changes. So those were the alternatives studied in the draft EIS. And then the final EIS and the preferred alternative ended up being, it included components of alternatives one, two, and three. So the council at the time picked pieces of three of those alternatives that became the preferred alternative. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So I just wanted to wrap up. So I'm showing that same schedule that we showed already, but we've added the dates here, so we can look at the timing of all of these pieces. So as we mentioned, our determination of significance is being issued today. And a 21-day scoping comment period is now open until Wednesday, June 5. We will be holding open houses within that comment period. And during those four open houses, the public's invited to comment on the scope of impacts they'd like to see examined in the EIS. We've got three in-person events scheduled and one online option that people can do at their own pace. All of those in-person open houses will be taking place from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. So on May 28th, we'll be at the Ridgefield High School. On May 29th, we'll be at the Vancouver Community Library. And May 30th, we'll be at the Battleground Community Center. And that online option is now online on the county website. So that is open as of today. The public can also submit comments in writing, so you don't have to go to an open house. Any comments on the scope of the EIS during this timeframe will be reviewed and considered. So after this scoping period, we will have another work session with you all, so we can come back and share what we heard in the comments at the open houses and that we received in writing, and then start to work with you on some next steps and getting your guidance on, okay, where do we go from here and starting to talk about development of alternatives. So that'll be happening this summer and into the fall. The draft environmental impact statement, we are scheduled to be issuing that in early 2025, with the selection of the preferred alternative happening in spring to early summer of 2025, which gives us just enough time to get the final impact statement issued in the fall of 2025, so that you all can make a final decision by, before the end of the year in 2025. Okay, so that's all we had. Glad to answer questions.
Questions of council?
Of course I have questions. Okay, so I'm curious about, my questions are going to be centered around the scope of the study. So for example, when assumptions, are they going, is the study going to be using our assumptions that we have developed?
Yes. So like the population numbers, you know, which jurisdictions planning for how, what portion of those numbers, all of that, yes, needs to be folded into that EIS.
Including like the buildable lands model? They can build, BBLM, those assumptions? I'm just curious if they use their own assumptions based on whatever they determine, or if they use what we have?
This is Oliver. This is environmental analysis. It has nothing to do with the BBLM assumptions.
Well, okay, so maybe let me ask you this question, and then that would help move forward. So for example, are they going to study things like homeownership and housing supply and prices at all?
No.
No?
Environmental assessment, as Jenna indicated, there are two types, natural environment and built environment. What are the impacts related to those, whatever the alternatives are? That's what the analysis will be focusing on.
Okay, so built environment is not considering those things? Okay, what about schools?
Schools? In the land use section, depending on the alternative prepared, issues on how to accommodate the growth. Remember, this is the decision that the council have already made on the growth that we are going to be planning for. So we have cover facilities element in the built environment, public services and utilities, depending on the alternative proposed. How would those public facilities and utilities be impacted based on the scenarios that we're looking at? That's what the analysis will be focusing on.
Okay, so, and then I guess my question would be like, so in terms of ownership and housing supply and things, is that something that we've just elected not to study, or that we're prohibited to study? Or how do we end up not looking at that?
I think homeownership wouldn't be, I don't see the connection with the environmental analysis in terms of housing. So we have the vacant buildable lands model. It tells us overall how much capacity we have. When you dig deeper on that, it tells you a split between how much we have in sort of single-family versus multifamily, right? The guidance from the state is requiring us to provide a lot more multifamily. We don't have sufficient existing capacity based on our model to accommodate that. So what do we do? Do we bring more land in and upzone it? Do we increase the density? We look at commercial, other land? Those are the types of things that we're going to be looking at to see if we can, in terms of alternatives. Cities, we're also going to be providing their own, where they're looking at growing and how they're going to accommodate the growth.
Okay, you know, I just, I feel like the different ways that we could go will affect things like homeownership opportunity, the housing supply, to the degree that it would warrant studying that. But I don't, I don't know.
Any home you build on a single-family lot could be a rental, right? So it's difficult, it's not something that's part of this analysis.
Is that, any other questions? No, okay, thank you. Sue?
Thank you. Thanks for this overview. It's really very good. I am wondering, though, when you, in the timeline, where does the climate work come in? Or how does that get folded into this process?
Sure. Kristin, could you move to one of the timeline slides? Look, one of the left, second to last slide. Yeah, that one, okay. So the development of the new climate element is one piece of, let me back up. The comprehensive plan update, right? One large piece is figuring out where are we going to put all of the people and jobs we need to plan for. So the actual land use alternative is one really large piece of this work. But the other piece of this work is that we need to review the entire comprehensive plan text and see if there's any policy changes that need to be made, such as based on new legislation from the state. So the climate work fits into the bucket of policies, right? We need to add climate policies into our comprehensive plan based on that new climate legislation. So we, so, at a certain point in the process, once we have a draft climate element, that will be coming before you all. We're going to have to bring all proposed policy changes within the comp plan to you. You know, so one day, we'll say, okay, here, we're going to talk to you about climate. Here's what we're, here's how we're meeting the new legislation. Another day, we're going to come back and say, okay, here are the revisions to the housing chapter based on the new legislation. So there's all these policy changes that also, we need to make sure our comp plan's current and up-to-date and consistent with legislation. So in the adoption process, like towards the end, you'll be seeing all the different content area within the comp plan, beyond just the land use maps, right? And where people, what we're going to be planning for. Okay, so that's like big picture. But in terms of, you know, we are working on, we have advisory groups and are working on the climate element now. So we're considering that work part of us working on revisions to the comp plan text itself. But it'll be next year in the adoption process, where it very neatly will actually fold in with everything else.
Okay, so it won't be part of the EIS process? And why I ask, because I think some of those policies could be mitigation activities related to the EIS.
Yeah, so there, so, good point. So it will be. So what's being considered in the EIS, it is the growth alternatives, but it's also the policy changes. So the consultants will be looking at the new climate policies, the new housing policies we need to integrate. So that's, that's part of what will be evaluated and analyzed. And I guess the one other thing I would mention, when we've done EIS work in the past for past comprehensive plans, climate change was never part of the evaluation. So this is the first time that climate change is going to be assessed as part of the EIS as well, which just never happened previously.
That's why I asked. So it sounds like work will continue on the climate element, but it will be considered through this EIS process. And I, as I recall, the 2016 comp plan, EIS, was really pretty at a high level. You're not looking at one specific area. Because I know, I was hoping that it would be more specific, so I could see impacts in specific areas. So I don't know if there are ways that we could drill down a little bit on something. So it's what I'm thinking about is availability of water with this additional population. Because I know there were some areas there was concern about, is there enough water available? And I think in 2016, it was, there was a lot more. available if, and I think in 2016 it was, there was a lot more development proposed in the rural area, and a lot more impact that would have come from that.
Yes, that would be part of the analysis, and as I mentioned earlier, for example, if you, not the county, but if any of the cities, for example, has an alternative that will expand your bank road boundary or bring in some new land, part of the analysis is going to be, yes, you can do that. Can you afford that inclusion in terms of this necessary services to address bringing that area in? For example, in the 20, maybe in 2004 or '07, when we added the 179 area into the UGB, that was part of the analysis that was done. And we determined at the time, councilors, that we couldn't afford it right away. And that's why it took more than 10 years before that area opened up. So those are the type of analysis that would be, would be done. What is going to be dependent on the scenario that you put in out there. We are talking about potentially, and I don't know this for sure, but the council just passed the housing, which could, the housing could, which could mean rezoning some areas, it could mean upzoning, I don't know yet. But if that were to happen, some of the analysis is going to be, are you going, in terms of water availability or sewer or whatever, what else needs to be, to occur in order to accommodate that type of growth, if you will? So those are the type of analysis that will be done. I don't know what the shape of the alternative will look like, but that is part of the scoping and hearing from the public, and that will help us and the council in developing those land use scenarios, that's what they are. How are you going to accommodate the growth that we are planning for? Some cities will say, yeah, we will redevelop our downtown and do that effort, add capacity, if you will. What would that do in terms of your utilities and ability to do that? And those are the type of analysis that this environmental review will, or assessment will do.
And, and just broadly, as I was thinking about potentially what the environmental impacts could be, I think water availability is one of them, but as there are areas that are more compactly developed, it's the impervious surface, it's whether or not there's any tree canopy for shade, you know, stream health, and then wildfire, I think, would be a good consideration that maybe we haven't considered in the past, but I think is becoming more relevant. So just broadly, those are some of my thoughts.
So I'm going to expand a bit. Listening to this discussion, thank you for the process overview, and I think the points Councilor Marshall were making on the timing are really important, and I can almost sense some thinking out loud by the staff, because, you know, the climate element is new, how it's going to work into the process is new. We're among the first GMA counties to have to grapple with it, but the point is, I think, well taken, it's, it's more of a dynamic process than may have existed 10 years ago with all these changes and the additional elements. And some, you know, not everything is a stovepipe, you know, things that we've decided already a year or so ago have outputs to that decision. And so how the, the climate is evaluated and what those outputs are going to be from all of our public outreach and your analysis and our consultant taking looks at things, you know, there's going to be outputs that will then be new inputs to the EIS. And so it's, I think it's, obviously, next year, it's going to be culminating. I mean, you're going to have to really consider the dynamic relationship of all the decisions made in the past, of those that are ongoing. So that's something to keep in mind, we can't just be static, they can't be stovepipe, that's, well, you've already made that decision, now we're going to look at this issue. You know, they are interrelated, one will feed into the other, so, and in between, boy, I hope the legislature doesn't make more changes next session that will be immediately effective on your comprehensive. Maybe they'll give you more time to conclude it, I don't know. But anyway, I think those are important timeline questions and, and a new way of thinking on the inner relationships and what the environmental impact statement will ultimately look like, and then all of it culminating in the final decisions this council will have to make with the staff input. So, good, good questions all around. Other questions? Michelle, Karen?
Just like clarification on one point. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. At one point you said, as I understood it, and I wrote it down at the time that I heard these words, that the built environment does not include housing. Given the subsequent conversation, that statement doesn't make sense to me. Would you clarify whether or not built environment does include housing?
Yes, it includes housing, it doesn't include homeownership.
Okay, so you're, you're contrasting there the use of the land versus the number of the people, right?
Councilors, what, what we are saying is that when you look at the land use, you're looking at how that land use, what is zoned, you will look at, for example, the decision or the allocation that the council have made, you've got a plan for, in order to accommodate this number of people, you've got a plan for X number of units. That X number of unit is what we are going to be focusing on in, in developing whatever the alternative will look like. That number of unit doesn't really tell you if it's apartment, if it's single family, if it's townhouses, if it's other options, what does that tell you about homeownership? We don't know. Some of them will likely be purchased by those that could afford to purchase them, some of them may be rental. So that's what Jose was saying, it doesn't get to the homeownership question. What it gets to is the alternative scenarios or the land use scenarios you're preparing or analyzing, does, how does each of the alternative gets to the number, how you're addressing the number of housing units that you are required to plan for? Alternative A may say, yeah, reason everywhere. Alternative B may say, don't do anything. Alternative C may be expand the boundary. We don't know, but do, this is the process now that will get us to how to shape what that land use scenarios will look like in accommodating the number of housing unit and jobs that you have already made decision on. The same is what, as my staff was saying, the cities will be doing. How are we going to accommodate the growth that have been allocated to us? So while it may not be addressing homeownership, it is addressing land use in terms of various land use categories, whether it's the property zone for commercial or industrial land or residential, if so, what type? And then, are you, depending on which scenario you're looking at, have you adequately accounted for the number of units you're planning for, and what are the potential environmental impact in how you are going to accommodate that? I mentioned, can you afford it? I mentioned, are you going to put in new sewer line, for example, if you're increasing density in some areas? What does that do to other related impact? That's what the analysis is all about, not so much about whether someone can afford, whether someone can own a home or not.
Now, do you see homeownership as related at all to the question of ultimate density? And therefore, whether or not the population can be served by the homeownership that is provided, or the housing that is provided?
Counsel, I think what I would say is that, as you know, homeownership is one decision that individuals make based on their income and other factors that they consider. And broadly speaking, I have not seen, and you can take a look at the previous EIS work that was done, and look at what was analyzed, and those documents are available, so it gives you an example of the type of issues that are addressed in the EIS. That's what I will offer.
Chair? One last comment, so, you know, I, I understand, you know, there's no magic ball to, you build a single-family house that can be rented, I understand that. But there is a very direct correlation from land that is currently zoned that would create the potential for homeownership, and if we were to upzone it into, to a fashion where it is extremely unlikely to have anything built now in that particular area that would offer any ownership opportunity. Because, I mean, we know that multifamily, there is very, very little possibility of having any ownership coming out of it now, typically unless it's luxury multifamily. So to me, it honestly feels like a failure that we're not looking at this. I think it is important to know, it changes the demographics of the county, has a huge impact on stability and vested interest in the community, whether there is ownership opportunity or not. And so I think it's a failure on our part to not incorporate that into the study.
I think what we're trying to provide with the housing issues, which is a separate, I think, from the environmental impact, is to provide shelter for a lot of people who otherwise can't afford it.
Any further comment, Oliver?
I think I would add that, you know, the EIS is pretty prescriptive on what is or isn't in it, and there are other factors that you all get to consider in this process. So I think if, like, when you make your decision, you can be considering economic impacts and things like that, that are not going to be necessarily studied in this document. So I'm not sure, right, like we were saying, homeownership, for instance, doesn't really fit within the scope of an EIS, but it doesn't mean you all can't consider it, right, in consideration of alternative options and picking a preferred alternative, but it wouldn't be part of this piece of the process.
Any last questions or comments? Okay, hearing that, oh, now.
Just a final clarification, I know this is informational purposes at this point, and more information will be coming back from council, but is there any, I just wanted to just triple-check that there's no direction for any county follow-up before they come back after they've done the public outreach?
My, my only suggestions were those broad ones related to environmental impacts.
See your hand on the button, you know? So I think we've had good discussion, I, hopefully everyone will incorporate everything that's been said into the work that lays ahead. You'll have hard decisions to make next year, you should read that book beforehand.
Yes, counselor, that's true, this is the environmental process that we're entering into now, it doesn't, as Gina was saying, stop the council from looking at other policy initiative, whether it's economic development, whether it is how the homeownership issues doesn't stop you from having that policy conversation. We will have, and like I said, I offered the previous document, so that that will give you an example, because some of you, this is new to you, so you can see exactly how environmental impact statement is done, and what is in it. It is, like I said, the SIPA rule is codified in R C W U 43.21C, and in there you will see what you are supposed to study, and what you're supposed to look at. And you have to follow those rule, and I also said it is also in Washington Administrative Code. So we, it is very prescriptive on what you have to look at. We talked about the climate bill being new, we have to incorporate that into the analysis that is going to be done. The scoping is just the beginning, where the public will ask us questions, have, can this looked at this, have you looked at that? That is what the scoping will do. And that's when we will take those questions and try to put it into land use scenarios. I don't want to repeat what my staff have shared with you, but this is just the beginning of the environmental review of what are, what are, what alternatives that comes out of the county and the cities. You know, the cities are not doing, I have to share this with the council, the cities are not doing their own EIS. We, the county, is operating as the lead agency, and by the code, I am the responsible SIPA official, so I have to make a determination on what level of SIPA needs to be, needs to occur, and what level of public outreach needs to occur during this stage of the process.
Just, just one very last question, just to alert the public, there is this window now to tell us what you think is important to consider in the scoping for this EIS, so I just hope people are aware and participate.
Anything further, Oliver?
No, sir.
Okay, well, thank you for that presentation, I believe that concludes our work session, so we're back in session at 1:00 for council time. This session will be adjourned.
Thank you.